If there is no objection, I'll consider the agenda, which is very simple to be approved. We're going to have one information item and a chance for a conversation. But we have the minutes to approve from September 16th, 2020, of the regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole. Is there a motion in a second to approve the minutes?
Vento moves approval.
Thank you. Thank you both. Any discussion, corrections? All right, Bridget, call the roll.
Uncle member Atlas Ingabretson. Atlas Ingabretson. Barbara.
Aye.
Chambliss.
Aye.
Coming. Coming. Ferguson.
Aye.
Edson.
Aye.
Gonzalez. Gonzalez. Johnson.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lillagren.
Aye.
Lindstrom.
Aye.
Muse. Muse. Turner. Turner. Bento.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Zaren. Zaren. Chair Ali.
Hi. All right, the minutes are approved. So now I'm going to introduce Mary Bogey, our acting regional administrator. This is a chance to kind of talk through our broad goals, talk about what we've accomplished, talk about what's ahead of us, and more, maybe more impervently, think about how we'll be allocating some discretionary funds for next year. And just to keep in mind, this is an opportunity, Committee of the Whole, we're not going to make any actions, we're not going to make any decisions, but we are going to get a little bit more familiar. So I'm really happy that we're going to have a chance to hear a presentation, but this is, most of this is really up to us. How do we want to spend our time talking about the issues, presenting some ideas, sharing with each other what we think is most important. We're not negotiating, but we're here to kind of learn and really honestly kind of socialize some different ideas so that the actual process of spending additional money and how we advance work in the future will go through the committee process. But I really like the idea that we come together without taking actions, learn from our staff, kicked off by Mary, and have an opportunity for having a conversation. So, Mary? You're muted, but so far it looked great.
I love when that happens. So thank you, Mr. Chair. And Greg, if you can bring the presentation up. I would also say that feel free to kind of interrupt as we go through and ask questions. That's perfectly fine. I will try to keep an eye on things, but Mr. Chair, if you could as well, keep an eye and stop me where you need to stop me or stop our other presenters. This is a pretty short presentation, but I suspect that we'll have some conversation around it as well. So Greg, if you advance to the next slide. So I have some objectives for today's presentation that really are just to reacquaint with the priorities that the council identified in our strategic plan, to discuss where we are today and consider the impacts of our current environment on those priorities. And then, as the chair said, to talk about where to invest our general purpose levy funds that we set aside in the calendar 2021 budget. The council member Ferguson and I talked a little bit about, as we look to invest those funds, we really want to look at what outcomes we expect to get from those funds and really prioritize where we can really identify those good outcomes. And then finally, to consider how we continue to communicate about and be accountable for our strategic plan. Greg, next slide. So I wanted to kind of start back with and run through our current version of the strategic planning document and kind of how we got to where we are today. So as part of the Governor's One Minnesota Plan, the council was asked to develop a strategic plan that aligned the core components of the One Minnesota Plan into our organizational culture. So the guiding principles in the One Minnesota Plan focus on practicing servant leadership, treating everyone with respect and dignity, doing the right thing, especially when it's difficult, removing structural inequity, promoting the common good over special interests, being accessible, transparent, and accountable, and including the voices of impacted communities. So when we began this exercise at the council, we had a really good foundation in place. The council's Thrive MSP 2040 identifies five outcomes that guide the council's vision for the region and really align well with the One Minnesota Plan. So our outcomes stewardship, prosperity, equity, livability, sustainability, and our guiding principles, integration, collaboration, and accountability. So kind of with that basis, we went through, as you remember, some brainstorming sessions at our council member retreats. And the council identified four key priority areas: transportation, reducing racial disparities, housing and sustainability, that they wanted to, that we wanted to particularly focus on during your term. So today I want to spend some time reacquainting with those priorities. And I'm going to invite the division leaders to talk about kind of the progress and the impacts that we've had in each of those areas. As we go through this from time to time, I'll be referencing that strategic plan that we submitted from the governor, to the governor's office. We actually submitted that as draft, and it's attached to the agenda. It's something that we're still, can be working on. It kind of got lost in the governor's priorities with COVID and other things that are occurring, but it's certainly something that we need to kind of return our focus to. I see us living in the environment that we're living in now for some time into the future. And so while we've spent a lot of time focusing on how to initially deal with the environment that we're in, we really need to begin to focus now on how do we live within this environment for what is going to be a longer time period than we might have thought when all this started. Next slide, please. So for each of the priority areas, staff and council members spent a considerable time breaking down each priority area into a goal with objectives and strategies that focused on regional planning, investment, and operations, and began to develop some measurable outcomes. So I want to talk a little bit about each of those for each of the priority areas. And I'll talk more at a high level, and then we'll drill down into those just a little bit more with the division directors. So, next slide. So I'm going to start with our transportation priority. And you can see the goal there. And I will say that we spent a lot of time on the wording of these goals, and so that wording indeed is important. The goal for transportation was to expand and improve our regional transit system, offering safe, reliable, and accessible transportation options for everyone that support our region's economic competitiveness. We had a regional planning objective that said to develop plans and policies that guide investment in highways, transit, freight, aviation, and bicycle and pedestrian facilities to achieve regional transportation goal of a safe, reliable, accessible transportation system. We had an investment objective to secure, align, and track federal, state, and local transportation funding for regional investment. And then we had a operations objective to operate a regional transit system that is valued by customers and community because it reliably gets people to the places they want to go, provides a safe and enjoyable experience, and works seamlessly across all services. So kind of really important words that were placed in there: safety, reliable, funding. So all of those things kind of align throughout that goal. As we looked at measurable outcomes for that goal, we talked about updating the 2020-2040 Transportation Policy Plan, completing construction for revenue service of the Metro-Green Line, the Orange Line, the D Line, Metro-Gold Line, increasing transit ridership on a region-wide and an annual basis. Could have enough COVID impact there for sure. Increasing our on-time performance, increasing customer satisfaction, increase the perception of transit as a safe and desirable service, and meeting and exceeding standards for metro mobility on-time service. So that's the transportation. Let's move on to the next slide, and reducing racial disparities. So the goal for reducing racial disparities is to make a measurable impact on reducing racial disparities experienced by people of color and indigenous people who are historically underrepresented people through our work in the region. Our regional planning objective is to convene regional partners, to gather, create, and strengthen best practices, and create measurable goals in reducing regional racial disparities. Our investment objective: use council resources, including procurement of goods, grant funding, external funding, and contracting to invest in historically underrepresented communities. And our council operations objective: advance internal infrastructure that institutionalized change by using practices, policies, engagement, and hiring to reduce racial disparities. Again, kind of that theme through investment and our operations to move forward with that goal. Some of the measurable outcomes: increase the share of underutilized businesses in the council's total direct spend to reach 30%. Increase the number of organizational leadership positions filled by people historically underrepresented. Direct transportation investment to modes and quarters that improve access to employment. Increase partnerships created to build new neighborhood initiatives in areas of concentrated poverty that have been underserved in the region. And review our council policies and procedures to eliminate barriers and increase equitable outcomes. Our next slide, please. Housing. Housing, the goal is to become a region with a broader housing spectrum where all people can thrive. Our regional planning objectives, we have two of them: assume a leadership role in developing a toolkit to help regional stakeholders eliminate unsheltered homelessness. And two, to support local governments in making measurable progress toward meeting affordable housing need as established in their comprehensive plans. And investment and operations objectives together: one, to increase council-supported affordable housing at incomes of 60% AMI or lower production, and preservation by 30%, targeting higher production when increased funds are available. And two, increase the rate of homeownership for people of color and indigenous people across the region. And then sustainability. For sustainability, the goal is to build a resilient region that mitigates its adverse contribution to climate change with a focus on degraded air and water quality and meets the challenge of the climate crisis. Our regional planning objective: to collaborate with regional leadership and state agencies, convene local governments and broader community to address climate change mitigation and adaption. Investment objective: accelerate the reduction of the Met Council's per capita greenhouse gas emissions. Our operations objective: to create an agency-wide sustainability plan in 2020 to streamline, accelerate, and coordinate all of the council's work in this area. Goals: completing the agency-wide sustainability plan, completing the regional greenhouse emissions inventory, reducing greenhouse emissions in the council operations consistent with the Next Generation Energy Act. Increase clean energy uses by 100% by 2040 for council services and operations. Improve operational efficiency and sustain compliance with water-air regulatory reliability requirements. So all of that should sound pretty familiar. We spent a lot of time with, in particularly those words, developing those outcomes. But it has been kind of a while since we touched base with those again. And next slide, Greg. And things aren't exactly as, the same as they were in February, of course, when we last looked at these priorities and put these goals and strategies together. And so we want to acknowledge that as well. Next slide, please. So most certainly that we may have some adjustments to our expectations, given the civil and political unrest nationwide. We've definitely had a COVID impact on our ridership for transit and some uncertainty about the recovery of that ridership, and that's really reflected in our calendar 2021 budget as well. And certainly funding changes and fiscal uncertainty as it relates to a lot of our services. And so with that, I want to give opportunity, well first I'm going to pause and say, ask if there's any questions at this point before we move on to having the divisions talk about kind of where we are now.
This is Riva Champworth. So I have a question. For this particular draft, did we get feedback from Met Council staff outside of the Met Council members?
Mr. Chair and council members, when we put together this particular draft, we worked primarily with our staff leadership and the council members directly to work through each of these areas. I can speak specifically to the reducing disparities piece where we did bring in a number of different people from each of our areas. So council member Ferguson, Si Jordan, myself, I think you were there too, potentially, had a few meetings where we tried to really bring this down to the levels of the planning objectives and the measurable outcomes. And so I would not say that this has been really socialized with all of our staff. In some areas, we're further along than we are in other areas because work was already happening in a number of these areas as well. So some of this reflects things that were already happening across the council. In other places, it's being socialized more as it comes before the committees and we're working on some of the objectives that have been placed in each of the priorities.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair, do you want questions to go through? You, I see a couple of hands raised.
Whatever is easiest. You should fill in the column. I know that council member Johnson had a hand raised.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mary. Couple of things. First of all, this is really good, you know, because a lot of work has gone into this, so it's great. Do we, in this piece, do we want to do a call out to COVID and civil unrest and the widening gap of, you know, the BIPOC disparities? And who do we want to use the term BIPOC since that seems to be where so many are landing on terminology because words matter? And I guess we're, you know, we're starting to, as we continue to work collaboratively with others, that seems to be appropriate, but that's just what I'm hearing. And then the only other thought I have around either the racial disparities section or housing, because we talk about disparities, I would like to say eliminate racial disparities. And I know it only goes out to 2022, but I think with everything that's been going on, if that's not the goal, is to eliminate, not reduce, it just sends a weird message. Because, you know, it just, for me, it just seems a little off. But I really like how this is laid out. I really, I just want to really lean into that part of the, part of it, because it's just so important to individual community and our state's economic competitiveness, in our region, I mean. So that, those are some of my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and council members. I do suspect that, given the environment that we live in today, that some of our priorities or the importance of each of these priorities may have shifted some. And that certainly can be reflected in where we choose to invest. And it certainly can be reflected in updates to our strategic plan. But I would be remiss if I didn't say that the council's 2050 Thrive Plan will begin working this next year. And much of what is in our strategic plan is kind of focused on the short term, where our Thrive Plan is over the next 10 years. And all of this that we're talking about today in our strategic plan really needs to find its way. And it's really kind of embedded already in Thrive 2040, but it needs to find its way with the twist that this council has put on it in terms of its priority today versus what it might have been when Thrive 2040 was developed.
Judy, I want to just affirm your point of view. And actually, council member Ferguson and I were talking about it. To have a, I equated very similar to the 2-0 deaths goal that a lot of state agencies, you know, in that fatalities on state highways. Okay, so that's completely different. But the point is, how do you have a goal of like killing 200 people, you know? So like, let's have a goal of eliminating disparities. Now, we can be realistic, like, that's going to take us, you know, how we reach that is a challenge. But I think that's, I like the idea that that's what we're trying to do and is where we're heading. So, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, as well. And I was going to say that that is being bold, and I think we should be bold. And I do agree, not, what council member Ferguson also said, and feel free to jump in, council member Ferguson, is that we're not going to end racism, but we should be able to eliminate the impacts of racism in the services and in the processes and the policies and procedures that we have here in the council. And that should be our goal, and that should be attainable.
As a follow-up, if the chair would.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the support. And I do appreciate the reality that we live in. I do think that we will end racism one day, because I choose to believe that. And I don't want there to be any kind of subtle, tacit, implied message that we're less than where we really want to end up. We're too big and too important in this region to say it by inches. We need to say it, you know, from here to the moon and back. So I will stand and want bold language, because I believe we can do it. Maybe not this council, maybe not 2050, but we can do it, and we should say so.
Thank you.
Great. Anybody with further questions, comments, before we move on?
Council member Chambliss.
Thanks. I love this discussion, as usual. And I'm also noting that in order to accomplish our goals, we've looked at that in our council operations objective, and one of which, number, strategy number five, to use data to identify current racial disparities and make, to allow us to make better decisions for those most impacted by our actions. That information is so crucial in order for us to be effective in meeting these objectives. So I know that the council is working hard to look at how we're gathering our data, and especially disaggregated racial and ethnic data will allow us to see if we're meeting our racial equity goals.
Good measures. Thank you. Any other comments, thoughts at this point? Lanay?
May I be on mute?
Mute.
Thanks. I had some technical issues last week, and so I apologize. I just want to talk a little bit about the environmental statement. Recently had to meet with some staff and council member Lindstrom, related to how we operationalize and really take a leading role around advancing interests related to climate impact and change in our region. And so one of the things that was clear to us is through, that we need to have a regional approach and information that local communities have. And oftentimes, for local communities, having information around the use and impact of development and planning on green space and natural resources is unattainable for them, just due to many of our communities having reduced resources and limited staff time. So I just wanted to put a shout out and really elevate the opportunities that we have right now, after a year of reviewing comp plans and adopting them, and seeing that we are, we can provide a picture to local communities and put together a picture as a region around how we are being planful or not, and the quality and quantity of naturally occurring and other types of green space. And I can't, the opportunities and the benefits are so important for us. It impacts our economic well-being. It directly is impacting the species who live in our community and our own physical health as individuals and communities as well. But in my work on MPASK and the tours we did, the rain events and the impact of rainwater and water movement in our communities is so significant. It has significant impacts on, of course, our aquifers, which are full right now, overly full, and therefore it transitions into significant flooding, which has big impacts on investments in infrastructure that have been made and that can be made. And having quality green space is a key part of that. So wetlands, ways for water to travel naturally, and to make sure that we still have opportunities for our aquifers when we do get into a bad situation, to be recharged. And so I just want to say that I'm really excited about the opportunities it looks like we have in front of us to think about carbon sequestration, the quality. And it would be so exciting to be a part of a council that provided information to local communities and as a region on how we're doing and what our trend is and what we can be doing, and putting, knitting together all those small local pictures into a large regional context that we can really be proud of and responsive to, especially the youngest people in our communities who are so concerned about this issue. Hopefully that made sense, but I just wanted to get that out there. Thanks for the thumbs up. Did I do a good job? Did I miss anything?
Two thumbs up.
Two thumbs up, good. Thank you, Lanay.
Thank you. We're going to hear more from our division directors, but maybe we should start that now, or unless anybody has another question?
Greg, will you bring the presentation back up, please? And advance the slide. And one more. All right, we're going to start with transportation.
All right, can you hear me okay?
I can, thank you, Nick.
So I am also going to pinch hit for Wes this week, as he is out, talk a little bit about the progress we've made this year on transportation, and highlight both what we've accomplished and some of the challenges that were introduced by, that were unexpected when you when you last talked about this in February. If you get back to that goal, you know, our strong goal of expanding our regional transportation system, this year we made very strong progress on both the Green Line Extension, Southwest LRT, and the Orange Line. Green Line, huge milestone in September with receiving the federal full funding grant agreement, which creates, as you very well know, the federal commitment to that project. And it is both our Orange Line and Green Line Extension have progressed this year. The COVID impacts have been fairly not too bad in terms of getting their progress on construction, which is good. And Orange Line is on schedule to open to customers late next year. So maybe over a year from now, that Orange Line will be in service. We also made strong progress on other transit ways that are building that network out. The Gold Line is in kind of a key phase, the Metro Transit leading the Gold Line project with our county partners. This FTA is doing project review this fall, hopefully entering a new service with revenue service on Gold Line in 2024. Our TRLBRT, we've been before you several times. It was a strong component of the governor's Bonding Bill this year. Having made the full progress we had hoped for that to advance the B and the D line, but we advanced the development of those lines to be ready for construction should the bonding state funding come. And then with council and TAB realigning the regional solicitation this year to fully fund the F line, whichever the F line will be. So taking changing that regional solicitation to fund one ABRT at a time is a major progress. We had to, we started the year with the network next planning process, and COVID had a big impact on that. We pulled that back because we aren't able to do effective engagement. But we have continued with the ABRT progress to identify the priority lines so that we can fund that F line. And F line will be identified by April of next year for which which line is will become the F line. So good progress there. And Metro Blue Line, we've continued our commitment to the Blue Line. We did with the challenges we've had with BNSF, had to make a change in August and try to relook at where that quarter will be. But us and our local partners have remained committed to that line. From a customer service experience, we've continued with our better bus stops and better transit routes. The council supported the expansion of TAP, you know, this is to include those that are unemployed, probably something we would not have considered at the beginning of the year, but the impacts of the economic downturn related to COVID, that was a very key expansion that this council supported very well in line with this plan. From a MTS standpoint, two major efforts I want to highlight, you'll be adopting the Transportation 2040 Transportation Policy Plan very soon. I think as a council, this will be your first policy plan you adopt. We'll also be adopting the Regional Parks Plan, which we'll probably talk about this year. So a couple of major policy plans you'll be adopting. And this is, as Mary mentioned, this is really part of us getting ready for the next drive, the 2050 plan. We're aligning all our policy plans so that we create this one big plan with the regional plan and updates to all our policy plans in the mid decade. And so that takes time. And this was an important step to finish that Transportation Policy Plan. One major regional policy effort study that we undertook this year was the Service Allocation Study, where we're really trying to look at what should the region invest in if we get more transit money in terms of our bus network, in terms of should we expand the areas that we cover? Should we invest more in the quality of the service of existing service and frequency and service and really engaging our policymakers for the first time in that in that key question? And so it was both council members and regional policymakers. And we anticipated concluding that this year. That'll go into our planning processes in the future. Just highlight a few considerations that we have been impacted by COVID. Obviously, major dramatic changes in transit ridership, transit revenue. That's a key question that will be this group will have to consider going forward. Significant uncertainty regarding budget and when ridership will return and how it'll look and what what, if anything, will be different. Fortunately for we did receive substantial federal funds to get recover our lost revenues for this year and next year, but we do have a fiscal cliff coming in transit. We've made major adjustments in how our transit service operates and is provided, both for Metro Transit and MTS, both due to budget pressures, but due to making sure we have a safe environment for our passengers with COVID, and then also just to adjust to that big decline in demand. And we've added services as with MTS, we've added essential worker transit services. We are delivering food from food shelves and doing other things that would not have contemplated even as late early as February of this year. That really shows responsiveness and support. We appreciate the support for those changes. They've been well received. And a lot of other adopted policies in terms of cleaning, protection of our drivers and customers from transmission of COVID and other changes. And I had mentioned lastly that we had kind of delayed our network next timeline, partly because we don't want, we're not sure what the future of transit is and what we need to plan for. But also, we thought more than anything, we needed incredibly robust engagement process to understand what the network of transit system is. And we didn't feel we could do that effectively in the environment we currently are for engagement. So we're delaying that into next year at least. But I think that makes a lot of sense for our transit. So that's some highlights, some really important works and pretty big changes that have occurred this year since we last talked about this plan. I think we can go to the next slide.
Any questions while you're here, Nick? We can always come back. Why don't we let's keep going then, and we can always come back. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Lisa Barajas, Community Development Director. On housing, we have a lot of highlights this year, a lot of work that we've had to do that we weren't expecting that I'll talk about in a moment. But just some key highlights about really increasing that investment in the local housing incentives account. This is the program of our Livable Communities Act programs that is specifically dedicated towards affordable housing. So this four and a half million dollars is paired with Minnesota Housing's consolidated request for proposals process and which is currently underway. And this is the largest amount of money that the council has ever put into this account over the many years. We were glad to be able to do that. We're excited for those outcomes, and we should be bringing those actions to the council later this year. It will look like probably a December timeline, not as quickly as we would like. COVID really threw things for a loop. And because of when it hits, when the application process was just getting started, Minnesota Housing decided that it would be a good idea to give our applicants a longer application period to work within. And so that just delayed our timelines for awards until a little bit later in the year than we would normally do. But nevertheless, we're really excited for that funding amount. The council also established a council member housing work group that includes four members among you that work with staff to really move forward the strategies that have been identified in the housing in this housing goal, in particular, really exploring the Livable Communities Act programs to ensure that alignment with the key objectives that are identified in this goal. This is this this seems like a really short and simple strategy, but with three big programs, there's a lot of work within that to really dig into both the statutes and the policies and really ensure that our scoring criteria and the way that we put out the programs, the processes, and the way we communicate them are actually open up the accessibility of the program to more communities around the region to really further the outcomes that the council is looking to achieve here. We've found those conversations to be incredibly fruitful and really help as staff kind of have a sounding board for ideas and to also get thoughts from the work group members as we're working on things before we bring them out to more public conversations, whether it's through conversations with metro cities or our land use advisory committee or other conversations. It's very helpful to have those discussions. And as I mentioned, we're really deep in those livable communities program evaluation and scoring criteria evaluation and moving those items forward. New considerations in this area really, I think, something that we always knew was on the horizon and was increasing was homelessness in this region. But with COVID and the way that we've seen homelessness really explode across the region and the role that we had to play that was really unexpected, took our time and attention away from some of the things that we had planned to do to really focus on supporting those experiencing homelessness who were in our encampments, but also supporting our partners in the region and their response to homelessness in other parts of the region as well. We were able to receive additional federal housing choice vouchers, mainstream vouchers, as part of the federal government's COVID response. So we didn't have to apply to these for these to receive them. And we were able to increase the number of vouchers that we have available to support those experiencing homelessness. So definitely an excellent resource to add on to otherwise very difficult situation. Because of COVID, though, a lot of our existing tenants in the HRA, as we've talked about earlier this year, a lot of our existing tenants in our programs were experiencing job loss or income reductions because of the closure of the economy. And so our staff really have been focused on helping those tenants stay in their homes, making income adjustments, doing all of the paperwork to make sure that they have the support they need to stay in their homes. So a lot of efforts that we would otherwise be exploring with our strategies related to different housing choice voucher programs that we might also use that we've identified in the within the housing goal have had to be put on delay for now, as we've really focused keeping our existing tenants housed and ensuring that they have the appropriate payment standards established for them. But we have been continuing to explore new funding opportunities from HUD and other local partnerships that we've been bringing forward to for your permission and blessing to move forward with. Those include some moving to work, rent reform cohort, next steps that we have been invited to participate in that would really open up our flexibility in how we use our vouchers and how we distribute them around the region and special programs that we might use to do that work. That we're just kind of moving into phase two of that very long application process. But there have been other opportunities and partnerships that we've been exploring as well, including the homework starts to home partnership that also or starts with home partnership that we've also developed this year as well. We continue to work through these items. There are a number, as you can see on there, a number of strategies within the report. Our staff that do the housing work within community development have a lot of ideas and and probably could have made this list longer, but we really wanted to think about what we thought was reasonable to accomplish in the next couple of years. We continue to do analysis, and you'll be hearing reports from us on the status of affordable housing production in the region, which we do on an annual basis, but also continuing to do, provide additional technical assistance and support to local governments as they're completing their comprehensive plans, as they're working toward their re-enrollment in the Livable Communities Act programs, and as they're working toward implementing their comprehensive plans and specifically on the housing elements and moving those items forward. So that's what I have for you on a housing update today.
Thank you, Lisa. Can we move on to the next slide?
And you get me for this one as well. Sustainability. In this particular item, the council, I think, just as a reminder, the council for the 2020 budget had allocated $250,000 to support the development of a councilwide sustainability plan, or as we've termed it, I think, which is more in alignment with the intent, is the Climate Action and Resilience Plan for the council, because we really want to be sure that it reflects the types of actions that that council members discussed, where you want to go and the type of impact that you wanted to see. The work on it has been a little bit delayed because our staff, being a councilwide effort, require staff from across the council, especially on operations who are down in the nitty gritty. And during that initial COVID response in the first two quarters of the year, a lot of our staff were pulled in other directions. So we didn't want to move forward with developing the scope and starting to do that work without all of our staff being able to participate in that. But I can say we are now right in the thick of pulling together those ideas, refining our scope. And like I mentioned with my housing team, our climate staff have a lot of energy and passion and a lot of great ideas. And we need to get our scope down to something that we can accomplish and get moving forward on. And some of those items include both the operational elements that that the council is interested in doing that make real that reduce our impacts and contributions to climate change emissions within the region, but as well as looking forward to our upcoming regional planning effort and starting to paint the picture of the types of elements that the council should be investigating related to climate change in the region as a part of the 2050 regional plan. So really thinking about actually some of the elements that Councilmember Alice Ingberthson had mentioned and are also in our in our strategic plan here around the roles that our regional park system, for example, can play in climate resilience and green and carbon sequestration in the region, but as well as looking at the work that we've already done around climate vulnerability and what that might mean for our land use policy and development policies going forward at the regional scale. We continue to work and partner with others on engagement on our greenhouse gas emissions inventory and scenario planning tool that we call Metro Climate Stats. I think a recent highlight that you will all recall is the opportunity with XL Energy to purchase electric buses that will really accelerate our impact in this area as well. And then, of course, we continue to think about and develop tools and technical assistance for local governments, because while we do have a large impact in the region in our operations, we know that our local governments are also both feeling the impacts in their own operations and development decisions, but also have a large role to play in reducing our overall impacts, because we know that climate, the large contributors to that are the built environment and transportation. So other considerations are also the establishment of the governor's subcabinet on climate change. The governor issued that executive order in December of last year. We had an initial meeting in January and then COVID, of course, and then really brought that team, that subcabinet back together, which Chair Zelli sits on about June, May or June of this year, and really have accelerated the work of what at a statewide scale, legislation and changes could be done to really accelerate efforts that are really consistent with the goal and strategies and outcomes that the council has already identified in the strategic plan. So we've been really excited to be a part of that effort. We always partner with our state agencies on this work and find that we're we're better together in that, but also that there are things that we would like to do that really may be more appropriate at a state level and vice versa, things that the agencies might like to do that might be more appropriate for us to do within the region. So it's been a really great collaborative effort with them. And I am complete with the sustainability goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Let's move on to the next slide. And Shanti, are you covering for Psy here today?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chair, council members, thank you. Some of the highlights that have transpired, we now have a racial equity strategy and framework in place, really to create enterprise by collective action and goals around workforce equity, community engagement, and our investments and procurements through our meetings with various divisions, also presentations, and work with the EAC and other partners. We are looking at the Equity Strategy Framework in ways that we can revise some of the language and improve upon what we currently have, and also provide the ability to measure our impact. And also provide the ability to measure our impact. And create those dashboards and scoreboards that will measure, prioritize and incentivize our performance objectives enterprise-wide. We also have engaged in some income and sustainability efforts to inclusive or inclusive spend and to increase our diverse spend with businesses owned and controlled by people of color, women, individuals with disabilities and veterans and ways that we can change how we are currently doing business to be inclusive and advance equity and prosperity. One of the things that we have engaged in is a supplier diversity opportunity and program. Working with New Flyer, which is one of our major suppliers of services in the transit arena. We have met with New Flyer, discussed what the requirements and what they're looking for in a partner or partners in the region. And there are real opportunities. And this is a place where COVID and our current situation has provided some opportunities. Businesses and are changing the way that they do business in terms of ordering parts. Smaller orders more frequently, so definitely looking for a partner locally that can house, store, product and be able to supply it to their customers. Also, working with our warehouses internally, both in environmental services and in transit and looking at what are those products that we frequently purchase both in stock and out of stock? And then matching those products with businesses owned by people of color, women and persons with disabilities and veterans. So that we can act more intentionally in terms of how we engage with those businesses and increase our spend with those businesses with our warehouse purchases. We are also working with other agencies that also are trying to achieve these same goals around increasing their spend. Eliminating disparities and seeing and exploring ways that we can leverage our resources and activities to have a bigger impact and a bigger footprint in this arena. So that includes agencies such as MINDA, Department of Administration, DED and PTAC to accomplish this. There is a draft of an MOU that we are looking and seeking both council approval to move forward in advance that will help us accomplish those goals. Some new considerations or other considerations, especially in the realm of technology. We have begun exploring various technologies that exist in the marketplace that will both internally help our internal procurement staff, purchasing managers and those who are responsible for making purchases act in an intentional way, in an affirmative way, in an impactful way. And also externally, make it easier or simplify the access points and how businesses owned by people of color, women, individuals with disabilities and veterans can access procurement opportunities at the council. Also in terms of our work with other agencies and organizations that are also engaging with this work besides the MOU. Exploring opportunities to provide resources that will sustain these efforts, build capacity in technical capabilities and identify and fill any gaps that we have in terms of our products, services and initiatives that we currently engaged in. We're also in progress of implementing council-wide racial equity training, training. And also considering how the new executive order may have an impact on the content of that training and what adjustments, if any, we will need to make in terms of the content of that training and implementing it council-wide. And then exploring statewide disaggregated demographic labor force availability. We have also just submitted our state affirmative action plan to MMB and have begun meeting with divisions and other council personnel to get them familiar with the plan, some of the goals that have been established and the activities that will support those goals and sustain those goals and then be accountable in terms of our reporting and sharing of progress in achieving those goals. And reporting it disaggregated and by separate divisions. And I will stop there.
Thank you, Ashanti. We can go ahead to the next slide. So I'm going to pause again to see if there's any questions about that section where we talked about kind of where we are today and the progress that we've made in the in, you know, the impacts of COVID and our environment on the work that we've been doing. Before we talk about kind of how we, well, not kind of, but how we want to invest in 2021. So questions before we move on. And I'm seeing none, so we're going to go ahead and move on. And Greg, you can advance to the next slide. So as we put together our 2021 budget, we very purposefully, in the management committee discussed the money that we have in the general purpose levy that is available to invest in the 2021 budget. And the management committee just wanted to put forward advancing equity in the region across our four priority areas. And certainly 3.9 million isn't a huge amount in a billion dollar operating budget. And certainly we address equity within our operating budget in other ways. But this is a very focused on advancing equity in the in the region as opposed to what happens in our daily operations. And so the opportunity for us to specifically target that 3.9 million dollars in these different areas. That our priorities may have shifted in how we invest that, given the environment that we're in. It may mean that that one of these priorities is more or less important to us than than the other. And so I wanted to have just kind of a general conversation about that investment today. Again, as the chair said, without looking to make a decision about how we invest that. And that decision will bring back through the committees and through the division leaders and the committees to have discussions within that committee about what the priorities are for each of these areas. And then bring those decisions back through the management committee as we identify the outcomes and prioritize where that 3.9 million will eventually go in the budget. So with that, I am going to open it up for some discussion as well. And Mr. Chair, did you want to start?
Thank you, Mary, and thank you, Nick, Lisa and Ashanti. I think that really it shows in very broad way of what we, what the council has been doing, what staff's been doing. And also goes back to our priorities, which were really listed by all of you. I say you because that was before my time, but I have to say I completely subscribe to these four pillars. And I think that we do a lot of that work as part of the normal course of the agency. But having some discretionary funds, although as Mary says, is I wouldn't characterize it as a drop in a billion dollar bucket, but it's not, you know, significant in terms of our overall budget. But it's significant in terms of just dollars that are available. And probably, I would think, an opportunity for some kind of more targeted efforts that otherwise aren't being done, that could be done in the context of the work we're doing. In other words, you know, our office of general counsel will remind us, you know, we don't have authority to do X, Y and Z. But we have authority to do a lot. We have authority to study work and we have, we have authority to help advance some, you know, some some kind of systematic change, you know, and then in a way I've heard some interesting ideas from staff. They're generating some. We certainly can hear from them. But everything from, you know, having some kind of evaluation of our, an equity evaluation of some of our investments. You know, when we think about workforce, we think about procurement, but you know, we're really kind of leading the region in ways. You know, we've certainly talked about it when we look at our regional economic framework. Those nine ambitions, which were on the slide, that last slide, you know, we certainly share them with many other entities. But we have some particular leadership opportunities, particularly in mobility, climate, housing. And, you know, how do we, how do we kind of start kind of getting at those bold shifts in our, in our region? So I, I think although 3.9 million isn't going to solve an issue, it might help us charge, set a new course. This is just kind of general thoughts that I've been thinking rather than just promote a particular idea. But I just thought I'd open it up with that general general thought. And does anybody else have either a big or small or granular, this is a time for us to kind of share whatever you're thinking. And it's not going to be the only time, because I think sometimes it's hard at Zoom and I certainly have heard that in our conversations that, you know, it's not like we're sitting around a room brainstorming. But or sharing our thinking, but we sure want to give you this opportunity. And we'll have smaller, we'll have committee opportunities or just even one-on-ones if something strikes you. Is that you, Chris?
It is, but Mr., there was somebody else was speaking, so.
Oh.
You know, I can go first.
I will yield.
You know, just a couple of thoughts, I think, as we set this up. You know, the way I start to think about it is, you know, this time next year, if we're writing a report to the governor or to the taxpayers to say what we got done with the 3.9 million, we'd like to be able to be clear with some things that happened as a result of the work that we selected to do. I have five for making those policy choices, those budget choices would not have happened. And I think one simple thing for us to think about is if we think of 3.9 million, we should be thinking about how much of that can we spend with? And so after the first equity piece, if we want whatever, whichever department we're doing work in, you know, could, how close to 3.9 million can we spend with five bucks? This is a test for our own sort of desire to change how we do things, how we engage with people with our kind of consultant, we're trying to hire whatever work we're looking to do. So, but you know, and I think we'll have plenty of time in the management team to look at this again, but we're just looking for ideas from people as to what we can do and how we should prioritize.
Thanks, Chris. Anybody have some thoughts based upon, I think, what Chris said is like, if we look back at this from a year, what, what happened, what changed? What, what new direction, what was, you know, it doesn't actually be accomplished, but there's something that we could say, but for this, this direction or this activity, this thinking, whatever, wouldn't have happened. This is great, great, great comment. Councilmember Bento, were you raising your hand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm pretty rooted in Maslow's hierarchy of needs and I keep thinking about the housing issue on several times each week. I drive past, past an unsheltered encampment on the eastern edge of downtown St. Paul near Metro State. And I've begun to really get kind of anxious about what, what's going to happen to these folks come November, December, January, February, March. And I don't know what we can do with 3.9 million. I don't, I don't. And, but I also don't know what else is being done on a, on a regional basis. So I read from time to time articles in the Star Tribune and the Pioneer Press and hear them on NPR and local news as to kinds of efforts that are being done to address the homeless, in particular, the unsheltered homeless issue. But to the extent that, that there's some sort of comprehensive review of what's being done, I would love to know that. And I would love to know if, if the gurus in this realm are identifying the best strategies going forward and what role we might play in that. One of the things that's troubled me the most is that I've seen infants in this particular unsheltered encampment. And the impact that this is having on children and infants, teenagers is, just makes me shudder. So with that, I'll just leave it and I'd like to know more. I'd like to know if there's any way we can help move the needle on it.
Thank you. And we do have some people in the room here who are, who are very aware of not just our work. A lot of it by many others. But before, I don't know, Councilmember Lee, were you responding to that or do you have a new idea?
Thank you, Chair. I was second with Councilmembers Bento and Harrison said, a couple of weeks ago, the Dakota County officials invited me to listen in on a webinar they were doing about their own kind of division for transit in the future for Dakota County. And one of their officials said something remarkable that I now subscribe to. And he said that transit service is a social service. Our transit service is a social service. Our infrastructure connects people to places where they go work, play, where they have shelter, where they can go shop. Everything about the nodes of connections to community with transit and how transit interfaces, everything that we need. As Sue mentioned, that's, that's a holistic approach to, to a kind of social service that we provide through our built infrastructure. And we, whatever we can do more to help people improve their social capital and their station in life, we should do that.
Transit as a, is a social service. Robert, maybe you might comment on.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And Councilmember Bento for bringing this up and, you know, just just today, probably what I've spent two and a half hours of different conversations about supporting our unsheltered relatives and how to work more collaboratively to do that. And when we look at the amount of money we're talking about and, and the equity areas that we're trying to impact, of course, as a bond or housing and a big chunk of that is we need more housing, we need more affordable housing. But really focusing on the sector of our population, we're sleeping outside. And relatively small amount of funds that we'll be investing in equity issues. And, and one observation I would offer is that at the community and provider level, there is all kinds of activity going on about innovating ways of being more collaborative, leveraging resources across silos and really putting the person at the center of our efforts. And I find that very, very encouraging. And every jurisdiction of government is doing some piece of this. But I will say, you know, I just had the experience of being very, you know, front row. just had the experience of being very, you know, front row, on the first occupation of the Wall of Forgotten Natives in 2018, and now on the second occupation of the Wall of Forgotten Natives last month, and my role in the system has changed throughout that same time, because I wasn't a Met Council member the first time, you know, and, and so I've had a number of, sort of, different perspectives, and I do have to say, overall, I'm pretty disappointed in the public sector's response, and with the second occupation of the wall, I really feel strongly how little progress we've made in the public sector. You know, I see everyone doing a little bit, I see providers and community really responding in innovative ways, but that hasn't sort of filtered into the public sector level of collaboration, and with a little bit of money to invest, you know, acknowledging that, and we, I would say my council has been probably the most responsive unit of government with the creation of the HAT team, with the cross-departmental collaboration with Housing Outreach and the HAT team, and with the interface with, with the community level activity going on, and I still think we can do more, and I really see at the staff level with all the agencies, I was in a meeting today with community and agency people from city, county, metro, Met Council, and state, and, and I can see that there's a hesitance to step in, the superintendent of Minneapolis Parks was one of our presenters today, talking at the park board, and I will say, they're one of the agencies that also stepped in, they came up with official policies and ways that people could live in tents safely and healthily in parks, so I commend them for that, but what happens at the public sector is whenever an encampment pops up on public sector property, the other jurisdictions, the governmental jurisdiction who owns and controls that property is primarily responsible, and other jurisdictions step back, and, and it's kind of a cheese stands alone situation, and just like, there's been so much opportunity, especially in the last two years, with the creation of the Unsheltered Homelessness Regionalization Work Group through the Minnesota Interagency Council on Homelessness, where the Met Council do step in, and to start helping to craft what a regional approach might look like, and this isn't going to get everyone into shelter or into permanent and safe housing, but if we invested in the regionalization conversation and really stepped in, I mean, what I see at the public sector, that the staff level people are working their heads up, and trying to figure out within their, the resources they control, they can control, how they can best be collaborative, but I really see a dearth of leadership in the public sector, and unwillingness to really step in, to really take risks, and as we're talking about doing things in a new way, to assume a regional approach to supporting people who are sleeping in places unfit for human habitation, I really see a stronger role for the Met Council, and that means leadership, that means at the level of the people who are on this call, and with a little bit of investment, I just wonder how we could accelerate the efforts to regionalize our response. So thanks for asking, Councilmember Vento, and thanks for listening, everyone.
And thank you, Robert, for not only the idea, but for your personal leadership in so many different ways, and that's a gnarly puzzle, and I think we would all agree with you that this hot potato, you know, public sector, I saw personally more collaboration with the Wall of Forgotten Natives 2.1, you know, 1.0, than, than now, it's in a period of scarcity, everybody runs away, and there needs to be more collaboration, then maybe we can leverage some of our strength. That's an interesting idea. Councilmember Johnson, no stranger of housing, Judy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, you know, I really appreciate the comments, thank you, Councilmember Vento, and Councilmember Lee, and Councilmember Lilligren, I mean, I get it, right, so is there a way we can, if, if, you know, it's, we haven't decided where the money is going yet, and I really, oh, by the way, Chair Ferguson of Management really support the, let's get the money in the hands of BIPOC businesses too, right, and make that money, make more money for, for that community, but is there a way to take the money, or a portion of the money directed towards homelessness slash housing stability, or however we want to craft that, and leverage it in a way where partners can come, and we can grant it out, but they have to bring additional funds to it, which forces, boy, that's a hard, harsh word, being a Met Council member, right, or forcing, but I mean, it draws in partnership because we've got carrot money, and is there, are there, is there, and really, Councilmember Lilligren, I, and, and, you know, there are others, I see Councilmember Cummings, I mean, are there ways we can leverage that money to entice or bring together people where they can, they've got some ideas, but they don't have enough money either, everybody's got a little bit of money, but maybe we can knit it together? I don't have solutions, I'm just trying to think what we can do with our money to make it grow more money.
Anybody have any thoughts? Lanaya?
So one of the things that, I feel like we've talked about this a number of times, where we've asked for what's happening in the public, in the whole response to this issue, because it's so big, I know many of us council members get many, many emails around this topic. One of the things I wonder about is, could we use a portion of that funds to seed or even implement a coordinating effort across public agencies, maybe it's a person who's charged with that on a regional basis, this is a regional issue, it might be located right now predominantly in one community, but it is a regional issue, the people who are living in this place, in these places are from all over our community, from all of our cities, and, you know, it was, I know that in some of my communities outside of Minneapolis, they've been talking about how do we prepare for what happens to us, when it should really be, how do we coordinate together to get people in homes? So I just wonder, is it an opportunity for us to, you know, wouldn't necessarily take a lot of resources, to have someone, and their work is to organize amongst the public sector, and coordinate with the private sector to aid in this, and I don't think this is just a housing issue, this is an economic development issue, this is an equity issue, this is an issue in our natural resources, this is an issue that reaches across our organization, the symptom of it is people living outside of homes, but the cause is the historic inequities that we visualize on our very own website every single day. So I just think that that would be one, and I'm curious to hear, Robert, others, do you feel like that's a good step forward to getting at that issue of lack of collaboration? I 100% agree with you.
And you might, Robert, thank you, Lanaya, for that comment and question, you know, the Interagency Council on Homelessness, which is a state agency, but it's kind of, I mean, I'm going to be bold in saying, it's kind of not operationally doing it, and, and I don't know, I would ask you, Robert, because you're close to it, and sometimes I, I see them too, you know, there is a coordinating body, but it's not operational in the sense of, although it's trying to be, you know, and this is a big, multi-layered government, state government, it is a regional issue, but to weigh in on this, in this coordinating world, there is a group that is tasked a little bit with doing that, so it's kind of a, you're laughing.
No, I really would be anxious, I mean, thank you for saying that, Mr. Chair, Councilmember Atlas Singapore, and thanks for bringing it up, I think you're really hitting the nail on the head, and I don't even think we've had this conversation, and I think this is, you know, Robert's armchair interpretation, but I think what's really lacking is that it's nobody's job, and as the chair just said, you know, the state agency isn't doing it, but we're not doing it, counties aren't doing it, cities aren't doing it, because it's nobody's job, nobody is responsible, and nobody is accountable, and so one of the things that concerns me, and I shouted this at a lot of elected and appointed officials, you know, littered with F-bombs lately, is that someone needs to take responsibility. So your piece, that you're suggesting, Councilmember Atlas Singapore, I think is a great one, a coordinating role, a little bit of resources to support that, at least we're stepping in to taking a little responsibility, and since nobody takes responsibility, it's, no, this is nobody's job, nobody takes responsibility, there's no accountability, and so a way to create accountability would be to have a point person who is, who is coordinating this work, and it's every, I have conversations with every unit of government practically every day about this, and we all find very nuanced ways of tossing the hot potato, or my latest image is the scarecrow in Wizard of Oz, who's pointing at, where he points at which direction to go, and so, yes, we can say, oh, state, you're not doing enough, right now, that's the flavor de jour, we're all pointing at the state, but I think we should really point at ourselves first.
Sure.
And say, what can we do, how can we step in, and then we have firmer ground to bring others into the conversation in a new way. So I feel like saying, you know, I, I'm less comfortable pointing the fingers at the state, although I'm doing it like with everybody else right now, because that's, that's the passion today, and next it'll be the counties, and then it'll be the Met Council, then it'll be the cities, and so how do we break that, how do we step in and say, okay, we'll take responsibility for this piece, and maybe a little bit of these equity funds could help us do that.
Thanks, I know that Councilmember Steiner had a, had his hand up, and then Susan, Councilmember Vento, and Molly.
Okay, thank you, Chair Zellie, I just had a small, we're talking about these big issues that may not warrant, but I talked to an MCub business earlier this, in the week, and they were feeling they're more of a manufacturing type of a business, and they need service industries to use their product, and so it had to be with our scoring, where we have people that are bidding, that are contractors for, contract through the Met Council, do they get any credit, or is that something we could look into if they use MCub businesses for their products when they do a bid, would be helpful, because you know, we're in such a big manufacturing state, and, and that behind the services, I think we would really gain by giving additional support and points if they're using MCub businesses, I don't know if that happens now or not, but that's what, what came out of my meeting with him.
Charlie, I could just comment, we, we have asked our procurement and general counsel folks to look at whether or not we could, for example, pay a bonus to a company, not on federal projects, but who performed with, let's say, 20 or 30% MCub product in that contract, and in talking with some of the contractors, if that existed, it would significantly shift it, shift how they spend their money, and I have not gotten an answer back, but that would be the kind of thing that I would help somebody like that get more of their product into projects, or used by our prime, what's on our contract.
This is really helpful, thank you, both Phil and Chris, I think that we've often said, we're not going to get through the procurement with just compliance, we actually have to kind of create some more creativity in how we actually move the dial, so, great thoughts. Let's see, Susan, I'm looking at you, Councilmember Vento, you had some thoughts?
Well, I just wanted to add that as we, as we proceed with this conversation around the housing issue, and in particular, the homeless issue, to the extent that it's appropriate to engage the congressional delegation from Minnesota in that conversation, I think it's really important, because the, the federal level is a big, could be, it isn't as big a piece of it as it should be, in my opinion, but I think they play a key role, and it would be good to include them. I'm going to have to jump off here in a few minutes, and I just wanted to throw one more thought, it relates somewhat to this, but it also relates to our other, our other goals, and that has to do with the, the intern programs that we've had, and the engagement of youth and high school, college-age students, I think every effort that we can engage in to really help young people, regardless of their age, become more and more involved, I think it'll be really important, I have been so inspired by the, the students who have come before us and made presentations in the last year, and I, I think, granted, because of COVID, that's harder to do now, but going forward, I hope we continue to be deeply engaged in that, and I have one last thought, and I was going to include this in my comment about the housing, and I forgot, I apologize, just recently, there have been a lot of articles in the paper about the significant number of women who are leaving the workforce because of the challenges they're facing during the pandemic, as it relates to raising kids and balancing it all, and I really fear that, that this is going to further destabilize life for a lot of families in our region, and I think we need to kind of keep that in the back of our heads, because it's, it's going to play out in, in ways that make it tougher all sectors, and we need to be aware of it, it, it's an equity issue, it's a housing issue, it's, it's an everything issue, and I really worry about that, and it seems tragic to me that in a year when we're celebrating the 100th anniversary of the women's right to vote, that's something that this, this significant is happening, so just a thought.
Right, thank you, and we have to, I hope we're capturing these ideas, because it'll be helpful, I think. Molly, did you have some thoughts?
I did, I did, mine are not related to housing, and I think the housing and homeless question is huge, and this discussion is really important, so I can wait if there are other council members who wanted to be a part of that discussion, before I sort of switch gears and throw something else out.
No, I think we can, this is like jazz, which I love, Lanaya referring to this, we can, we can, we, we won't, we won't lose housing or homelessness.
All right, good. Okay, and I realize that $3.9 million would do nothing to address what I'm going to throw out there, I'm just going to throw it out there for us to think about, and that is about transit, transportation that is fair, free. We're currently operating, you know, we were able to get essential workers where they needed to go, and I think that word essential is really critical and important, they are essential to each and every individual in this area, and the jobs that they do, and the work that they do, and many, many, many individuals are dependent on transportation in our system, which is great, our system is, but it has been gutted, I mean, has just been gutted during the COVID pandemic, so rather than, you know, I realize that this is a huge issue, and I know it has come up before, but it seems like perhaps, again, this is our moment, I guess if we have a robust, fair income, and we're just cruising along and doing really well, it's pretty hard to then go and say, well, let's, let's get rid of fares and let people ride for free, I think now we're seeing that we are, we are functioning, we're limping, I get that, and I don't know what $3.9 million, but perhaps that could fund a study or something to figure out what the alternatives are, and who our partners would have to be, and how we would approach the legislature, we're facing a huge financial cliff anyway, maybe this is something to be thinking about, is there a possibility, is there a way, how could it happen, who would it happen for, but it is so important, we have people who are cobbling together two and three work, jobs, and the amount of time it takes to get from here to there, or they can't get to there for, for that particular job, I think it's something that, that is worthy of talking about, especially in this environment in which we currently find ourselves.
Right, thanks for that thought, Molly, and it's, it is, it wrapped up with our who we serve, fair enforcement, and then the cost of actually collecting fares, you wonder really how much revenue we're taking. Lanaya, you are having your hand raised again.
Okay, I am unmuted, thank you, Chair, I also, given the spirit of the conversation, we will be receiving some information more broadly from our Metro Transit lease around assessments related to how they've engaged with minors over time, and I've gotten an opportunity to see that information, it's something we've been working on for quite a while, and it is, it's really heartbreaking. So what I would ask is that we get really, it doesn't take as much resources to do really quality do, um, really quality, um, restorative justice approaches with children. Um, but we destroy lives when we institutionalize and put our hands on children as adults, whether we are authority figures or otherwise. And so I just would really ask, as that information comes available and as we think about this, that we don't forget about, we have the opportunity to do some small investments that can make a really big difference. You know, $200,000 could revolutionize how we do things with the children in our communities. And, um, and in this case, um, uh, black children who are grossly overrepresented in our actions. Um, and, and I think that if we don't take action and invest in that, it, it, the, we need to invest in order to create change. So, um, sorry for, um, anyways, I'm not going to apologize is what it is. And I should be upset and, and everybody else, um, should, should be as well. So I think I wanted to throw that out there as we're talking about equity and, and things that we can do. And when you start to put the picture together of, um, housing supports and employment and implementing best practices in building community, um, making transit truly accessible, those are the things that will make our visualizing disparities trend change. And if we can do that on a regional basis, then we really can make a difference, make that difference that Councilmember Johnson is choosing to believe is possible.
Thank you. And, uh, thank you for sharing not just the thought, but the, but the priority. And, and I also really like to affirm this idea that it doesn't have to be a grand $3,000 gesture. It could be a $200,000 grant that is really shifting and changing some of our practice of what we're doing. Maybe it just takes that kind of specific investment. So appreciate that thought. Judy and then Wendy.
I, I would just say, is there a process by which we can bring all of this to a place, you know, and then figure it out? Is that management or is that going to be staff or, you know, because there are so many good ideas, but you know, if, if we can work with our goals, there are strategic plan, the economic plan and data driven to apply funds where we'll get the impact we seek. Um, and I just don't know where we go from here because these are all great ideas, but then what?
So, Mr. Chair and councilmembers, I can certainly answer that. And, and this is really good conversation and I didn't expect that we were going to make decisions in this meeting, but just kind of throw some ideas out there so that, so that, um, you know, you may have your mind in housing, but hearing about, um, a restorative justice approach with our, with our youth, um, might have just shifted your, your idea to, wow, I mean, that's, that's important too. And, and that's kind of what I wanted to have in this larger conversation. Um, I would shift this conversation now to the committee level, um, to talk about each of these four different priorities. Um, they kind of fit within the, within the committees to develop kind of some priorities and, and, and I thought about, um, the right amount to target to that. Um, and then bring that discussion through the management committee to adjust the budget for, for those things and to target those funds. And so, um, in the management committee, we will try to develop some criteria for looking at those, um, specifically kind of, um, what Chris was talking about earlier about, um, what's going to be different after we invest, invest these, these funds? What, what are we going to see in those outcomes? And so, um, that's the way we'll try to bring it back and then back to the council level through the management committee.
And if you could bear with me, could, is there a way that you can survey council? Because I'm an extrovert. Everybody knows that. I got something on my mind. You're going to hear it. But I know also from, you know, my years in government, some of the best ideas are from those that may not voice it in a, a meeting just because they're, they're the thinkers and they're the ones that have those brilliant things that I don't come up with. So is there a way after this meeting to try to capture maybe some of the what wasn't said today, um, for, for everybody? And I'm not sure if we had a full council today, but just so nobody gets left out.
We can certainly do that.
Judy, maybe, yeah, maybe it makes sense. I will give people all of the time with each one of the council members and just get their thoughts. So we can, and we'll gather all of those and then we can, obviously things will work through committees as well, but to make sure we get everybody's perspective. Uh, so I think this is too important a conversation to leave some views and perspectives, uh, on the sidelines.
Yeah, I was just, you were just jumped, uh, so my thoughts and I, uh, no, Mary and I haven't, uh, spoken, but I really would love to see a lot, all these ideas, you know, captured for all of us to look at again and capture those ideas that haven't been spoken. So, uh, thank you for that. We need to. And then it'll work through the committee process and maybe this is what Mary is, you're thinking, but I'd also like to gather the thoughts that are coming from the staff. I mean, we have real expertise there that I, I'd love to kind of react to it as a whole and say, oh, you know what? I hadn't thought about that. That would really be a great leverage point. So.
Sounds good.
Right answer. Oh, no, sorry. Thank you, Mary. Um, any other, uh, any other, any other thinking thoughts now? And I, and I think, uh, Councilmember Johnson really said it well, that, uh, uh, there'll be more opportunities to come up with ideas and reactions to ideas than just this, this point. This kind of gets us, I think, going and thinking. Uh, but we'll have to move pretty quickly because we're going to have committee meetings. We have a budget coming up. Uh, Wendy had her hand up first and then Riva.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm interested in hearing more about what Linnea was talking about. I have not seen that information and if it could be sent out to the rest of us so that we would know what is going on, that would be helpful in our decision-making processes. As far as, uh, Councilmember Cummings' suggestion of looking at a fair free transit system, I respectfully disagree because we have had such an upheaval in our transit system this year with COVID and unrest and everything. We don't know what's coming back or not. I, I mean, there's, there's going to be some serious disruption. We, we used to have the consistency of demand and sort of a long-term level look at what the future was for, for transit ridership. And that has been absolutely blown up. It's gone. It's, it's completely been destroyed. And, and I don't think that we can, uh, ignore how much disruption there is now and potentially in the long term. Much of the region doesn't have any express service anymore. And we don't know if they're ever going to be coming back to working in downtown Minneapolis or not, if that express service is ever going to come back. But we've already done a lot of work to make sure that our rides are affordable for people who are struggling. We have the, the TAP program, um, so that people who have income issues can still ride the bus. But if, if we've already lost service for much of the region and then we say, well, it's not, the, the, the people who do still get the bus don't have to pay, the rest of the region's going to say, what? And the, and the rest of the state in terms of providing funding for, for transit. It's, you know, if, if only a select few people get to ride and it's not even worth it to them to pay, then why would we have it? So I think that's opening a door that we really shouldn't, we should be focusing on trying to figure out where we're going to be going, um, long-term for, for ridership. That's a lot more important than coming up with a, a sort of symbolic gesture to make transit free.
Right. Well, that's going to be part of our debate. Riva? Thanks, Mary.
Um, thanks. Um, a couple of things I wanted to, um, respond, um, in support of what Linnea was saying and, and looking at our youth, um, also based on, on what Councilmember, um, Vento said, um, you know, about Maslow's hierarchy and our basic needs. And, um, with the pandemic tossing things on its head, yeah, we've got some big challenges. And even before that happened, um, we're expecting, especially in transportation, um, and other areas, that fiscal cliff to happen in 2022. What's more important in order for us to be able to sustain, survive and thrive through this is for us to have our priorities, which is how this discussion started. Um, so it's even more important for us to look at, um, our priorities, to look at, um, our disparities and to look at how we are going to manage through that. Because if you were already close to or at the bottom and then you have something that makes it worse, that should affect our priorities. Um, and, um, it may requ, and it, uh, because of the pandemic, we've had some major shifts in how we live and what we do. It may change the way that, um, the council handles its priorities. Um, and in terms of, um, the household and how we look at that and how we look at the economic picture, we should be looking at the household picture and that includes youth. And that way we're not going to be missing what the needs of our youth are. That way we won't be missing what the needs of our elder, um, are disabled and the people who have been historically underrepresented, um, and underserved in this country. So, um, everything that everyone has said is very valid. And we're going to have to make some critical decisions on what we do as a council. And the best way for us to have some focus is to prioritize and to know what our values are to get us through this.
Other thoughts? Mary, were you about to say something?
Um, no, Mr. Chair. We're ready to, to advance on from here. I just have one more slide to talk about. Um, I think, um, I think that-
This would be a good time to do it.
Yes. I, I think what I was really hoping for in that area is to just kind of hear kind of the variety of things, um, that, that the, that the council, um, holds as important. And, and it, of course, we have a bigger list than we will have funding for. Um, but we've kind of settled in, in how, how we want to bring that forward. And, and I think that that was what was important to me, um, in that conversation. And so, the last slide I have here, um, talks about how, how we stay on top of this and how, how we communicate and, and hold ourselves accountable to, to the priorities in our strategic plan. And I've pulled from, from here, just a couple of examples from Thrive, actually, in the dashboard that we have on Thrive. And as I said, kind of early in this conversation, um, really these priorities fit within, within Thrive and will probably live even clearer in our Thrive 2050 plan. Um, but, um, that we, this is the kind of, of reporting and, um, showing that we're getting to outcomes that I would expect us to see in all of these areas, um, for each of these priorities that we have. And so just kind of wanting to get just a little bit of feedback on, um, how, um, this type of dashboard reporting, um, works or for councilmembers in, in, um, holding that transparency as well as that accountability.
So you want a reaction on, on these sustainability and livability as kind of examples?
Just examples. Yeah. So these are examples of the kinds of, of ways that we would, would, um, bring information, report on, um, hold ourselves accountable to, um, the measures, the outcomes that, that, um, we hope to achieve.
Yeah. And I, and I think that, uh, I know you and we've been working on dashboards to see the progress on our four main goals. And I think seeing it visually, seeing it, uh, in terms of data trends is really, uh, you know, I think that's something we all appreciate, knowing what progress we're making, even though it's been two years. We've hit a pandemic. We've hit the, uh, all the issues associated with this year, but.
Right. So, yep. And so this is, this is the format that we would begin with. Um, and we can tweak it as we go along, um, to make sure that we're putting the right information that, that really tells our story. And so, um, we'll begin with something like this and we'll, we'll certainly change as we go along to make sure that we're meeting the needs of councilmembers and other audiences that, that we want to hold accountable to.
Any reactions? Robert says thumbs up. Uh, I think this is great. Uh, you know, I, I, I think that as we progress, uh, we've talked about wanting to see the whole forest, not just the individual trees, but sometimes the trees, the patchwork or patterns. We've talked about these regional trends can be bent by some of these, the data that was within these dashboards. So it's kind of seeing, seeing both the forest and tree.
Mary, just one question. How, how often do you think you'll be updating the, the data? Is this a, a real-time view? Are that'll be updated, you know, daily or is it a, you know, once a year view?
Um, Mr. Chair and councilmembers, I, I can't see it happening, um, daily by any means, but, um, I do think that we need a commitment to, at least on a quarterly basis, have a discussion about, um, the information that's in the dashboards here in a committee of the whole meeting. Um, because I don't think we can be accountable simply by placing data on a, on a website. I think we have to have that conversation and tell the story.
Conversation around the dashboard. Linnea, you had a question, thought?
I, I was just going to say, I think this is a powerful way to, um, light metrics and measures that we need to be paying attention to and also create, um, and communicate a sense of obligation, which I feel is only something you can do as an, you know, as a, as the collective royal wheat, to communicate that we say we are accountable or obligated to these things. And then this, to me, is a visualization of our willingness to be accountable to others and I think, and to ourselves. So I really like this as a tool. I'd also say that other institutions are struggling with how to go about this work themselves. And, um, this is also a way to provide, um, maybe passive technical assistance or opportunities that other agencies can use and benefit from. And, and maybe even ways where they can call and say, hey, here's what we're doing and we can learn from them. So I think that this is a very powerful tactic to be a part of our toolbox, um, for addressing institutional change. I'd also say that I think one of the challenges we've had has been having institutional knowledge that continues from one council to the next and even from one staff. So this can be a way of institutionalizing knowledge, which is such an important thing to do to create a stronger organization. Thanks.
Great thoughts. Yes. And I, we've described cadence of accountability, but we have to start with accountability to ourselves. Uh, so great thoughts, Linnea. Thank you. Um, anyone else? Uh, well, Mary and Nick and Lisa and Ashanti and, uh, and everybody who's been involved in, and, and will be involved in developing these ideas, developing the dashboards, the measures. Um, this is a tall order and we're not, um, we're not, uh, saying, we're not naive to that this is a lot of work and the face of everything else, but I, I think it's really important too. And I, and I think this conversation really- And I, and I think this conversation really generates not just our frustration, more our ambitions in, in the face of these challenges. So I think this has been a great session. It's messy and hard, both because it's the beginning, but I think as we bring this through committees and create a little bit of focus as we generate a bunch of ideas, we've kind of talked a lot about some of the values underneath these, these comments, the idea that we can't do higher thinking until we can take care of youth at the most basic level. And I think this really is helpful. We're coming to the end of our two hours, and I think we used it well. It shows I'm no predictor of how long an agenda might take, but I think it's been a helpful conversation. Anybody have any last thoughts or questions? Mary, any last request, thoughts from us?
No, Mr. Chair, I, I would echo though that this has been valuable conversation. It, it helps staff understand that we're going in the right directions with some things and that we've got some, some shifts that, that we need to make as well. So very helpful conversation.
All right, well, stay tuned. If somebody, as soon as we adjourn the meeting, you're saying, I wish I'd said this one thing, don't worry, email it, find me, find Mary, we'll have it in the committees. We'll, we'll generate an opportunity to bring those ideas forward. I'm hoping we can collect them and create some kind of ongoing dialogue that won't just wait every two weeks or every week, but an opportunity to kind of weigh in, even if it's, and there are no bad ideas. We certainly can debate them, we'll have plenty of time for that, but I think now we're an opportunity to kind of generate thinking. With that, thank you all for your time, your wisdom, your thinking, your emotions, your brains. And I, I haven't looked outside, it's still nice outside. I don't know if Chris is still outside, but it's, I'm thinking, oh, Riva is. So there, I thank you, Chris, appreciate seeing that. And enjoy your evening, and we will stay tuned for some more exciting council work ahead. Thanks all, we're adjourned.
Thank you.